Board of County Commission Meeting. We're going to begin this morning. Commissioner Uribe will be introducing her guests, who will be bringing the invocation. Following the invocation, Commissioner Uribe, I'm going to ask if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pastor, I'm going to come down and we'll take a picture right after that before you may have to leave at that point. So following that, the Communications Division Manager, Dr. Jeff Williamson, will read Proclamations Recognizing Americans with Disabilities Act Day and Purple Heart Day. So we do have some veterans who have joined us here today. And with that, Commissioner Uribe, you are recognized at this time.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues and everyone visiting us today. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Eliana Ramos. Is a highly accomplished and dedicated individual driven by her faith in God and her passion for teaching and spreading the message of the Kingdom. Alongside her husband Reverend Rafael Cruz, she co-founded El Sade Church on December 3rd, 1994 in Orlando, Florida. This Hispanic ministry has grown under their leadership and is currently witnessing a phenomenal move of the supernatural power of God. Originally hailing from Puerto Rico, Dr. Ramos has pursued a path of academic excellence. She earned her bachelor's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in marketing from the Metropolitan University in Puerto Rico. Her thirst for knowledge led her to complete a master's degree in theology from the esteemed Pentecostal Theological Seminary in Orlando, Florida. Additionally, she holds two doctorate degrees, one in ministries from Vision International University in Dallas, Texas, and another in philosophy and theology from the Vision International University in Florida. Beyond her ministry work, Dr. Ramos also utilizes her talents and expertise in the corporate world. She currently serves as a Human Resources Director at Bedrock Care in South Orlando, lending her skills to create a harmonious and efficient work environment. Dr. Eliana Ramos was called, has called Orlando her home for the past 31 years, and her unwavering dedication to her faith, ministry, and community continues to inspire countless of individuals through her teachings, leadership, training, and commitment to spread the God's message. It is my honor to introduce Dr. Ramos today for our invocation. Thank you.
Good morning. I want to thank the Mayor and the Commissioner, Mayira Uribe, for this opportunity. We're going to pray now. Lord, I thank you for today. Father of goodness, in your hand we entrust the say of the word. We place our effort in your merciful hands and we beg you to enlighten our mind and heart so that we only see to continue building a world capable of hearing your voice. We want to invite you to the meeting that will take place this morning. You know the purpose? Give them the ability to make decisions for the good of this nation and this county. We ask you to take control of every decision that has to be made today. We ask for the window, knowledge, your favor, and your grace. Clear their minds, their heart, their thought, and allow them to receive your peace. Teach us to submit to all governmental authority. Bless this nation of the United States. Bless the state of Florida, the city of Orlando, especially this county. In your hand we put the entire agenda and everything that is going to be carried out. In the name of Jesus, amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
AJ?
Thank you Pastor Ramos. Commissioner. There are two proclamations, as the Mayor said. The first is for the American Disabilities Act. And the proclamation reads, whereas the American with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990 prohibiting discrimination on the basis of disability, employment, state and local government, public accommodations, commercial facilities, transportation, and telecommunications; and whereas July 26, 2023 marks the 33rd anniversary of this monumentally important and historic federal act; and whereas Orange County affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as embodied in the ADA, the laws of the state of Florida, and the ordinances of Orange County; and whereas numerous organizations in Orange County and the state of Florida work with residents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope, freedom, and equality which were envisioned by the passage of the ADA; and whereas the ADA marked a milestone to ensure that no resident is denied access to employment, education, cultural activities, or community life because of a disability; and whereas Orange County government has actively embraced attendance and precepts of the ADA and is committed to building a community where the residents have an equal opportunity in each aspect of life; and whereas this celebration will raise awareness and promote a better understanding of the challenges persons with special needs face and conquer on a daily basis. Now therefore, Jerry O. Demmings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, does hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 26, 2023, as American with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Orange County, Florida. Done and ordered this 25th day of July, 2023, signed by the Mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Receiving the proclamation and bringing us a few brief comments is Jen Vargas, who is a member of the Orange County Disabilities Advisory Group. Ms. Vargas.
On behalf of Orange County's Disability Advisory Board, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, and thank you Commissioners for recognizing the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's so great to live in a place where diversity, equity, and inclusion is in the forefront, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Mayor. Our second and final proclamation is for Purple Heart Day. The proclamation reads, whereas on August 7, 1782, General George Washington, then the Commander in Chief of the Continental Army, established the Purple Heart Award, originally designated as the Badge of Military Merit, as a sign of appreciation and gratitude towards those who served during wartime; and whereas Purple Heart recipients, men and women of extraordinary courage, have offered the highest form of devotion to our nation, having faced the harshest of battles, endured the most grueling conditions, and have borne the scars of conflict, all in the name of liberty and justice. And whereas August 7 is the day for Americans to remember and honor the men and women who bravely represented their country and were wounded or killed while serving, and were decorated with a purple heart in the name of the President. And whereas it is important not only to remember and thank the brave men and women who have been wounded in combat, but also to recognize how they are taken care of when they return home, including acknowledgement of their unique needs as veterans. And whereas for as long as US service members place their lives on the line against the nation's enemies, the Purple Heart Medal honors their sacrifice and carries the legacy of George Washington and his ideals in honoring the contributions of volunteers and putting their lives in danger, a hallmark of the US Armed Forces. And whereas it is desired the Orange County Board of County Commissioners to recognize the many members of the General Bob Betts Chapter 400 Military Order of the Purple Heart, who reside in Orange County in Central Florida and have received the Purple Heart in recognition of their wounds sustained in combat, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice with their lives. Now therefore, Jerry O. Demmings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, does hereby proclaim Monday, August 7, 2023, as Purple Heart Day in Orange County, Florida, and encourage residents to show their appreciation for the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending and preserving our freedoms. Done and ordered this 25th day of July, 2023, signed by the Mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Receiving the proclamation and delivering a few brief comments is retired, enabled Captain Rich Sloan with the Orange County Veterans Advisory Council. Captain Sloan.
Thank you, Mayor Demmings and Commissioners. Orange County is a caring, compassionate community that makes veterans, Purple Heart recipients, Gold Star families, welcome to be here. Institutions like the Veterans Administration Hospital, Fisher House, United Way, the support groups at the University of Central Florida for veterans, and especially the Orange County Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council make us understand that we are appreciated and valued. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to ask if there are any veterans who are not part of the chapter, but are veterans, would you stand at this time if you are a veteran of any of our armed forces? Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you for your collective service. All right. It's always great to have our veterans join us for these special occasions as well. We're going to move forward on our agenda. We do have a very robust agenda this morning, and so the next item on our agenda this time is public comment. We'd like to invite members of the public present to come forward regarding topics of interest or concern or that are within this board's authority. However, there are certain matters which are not appropriate for public discussion during this public comment period. These matters include pending procurement or land use issues or concerns that should properly be brought to another board. We will have the land use issues before us during public comment this afternoon. Also, we will, of course, solicit public comment at that time for very specific items. With that, Mr. Boss, do we have any members of the public present who wish to be heard at this time?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few. Thirty-two speakers at this point.
Okay. Because we do have a very, very active agenda this morning that we'll need to get to, we are going to limit the speakers this morning. Please, two minutes. We're going to hold you to that two minutes. It would be helpful if multiple individuals are speaking on the same subject to somehow consolidate that in the best interest of time so that we can take care of all of the business before us this morning. With that, we'll begin with public comment at this time.
Folks, I'm going to call your names in groups of four. When I do, please line up along the back wall, come up to speaker podium to speak in order. When you get to the podium, please say your name and address for the record. First speaker is going to be David Martins, followed by Cynthia Harris, Javier Cruz, and Ronald Herbert.
Good morning. Cynthia Harris, 12 Shannon Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32811. I'm here today to speak on a property located at 237 South Ivy Lane. Most people would think that that property is in the city, but I kind of straddle both the county and the city. And it is a detrimental intrusion on the Greater Malibu Grove's community because it has become a virtual car lot. This property is owned by Agape, perfecting trade, praise and worship. However, this property is residential, is own residential, but it has several cars on it. It's a virtual car lot. It's a detrimental intrusion because of the hazardous materials that could possibly leak into the ground because this property also outlines a lake. So you're talking about oil spills, you're talking about tires, you're talking about gas leakage. These things can affect not only the environment, but the community as well. There have been several complaints about this property, but to no avail, there has nothing been done to it. I'm here today to ask you to make sure that the rules are followed because if a residential property has to adhere to code enforcement and zoning rules, this property should too, regardless of the fact that it's owned by a church. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harris. We will note that for follow-up by our code enforcement. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Javier Cruz, 2403 Lauderdale Court, Orlando, Florida, 32803. Thank you for having me here today. I am a veteran of the United States Navy, and I appreciate my members that are recognizing Purple Heart recipients and all of us that served. Thank you. I am addressing, well, first giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. I humbly give thanks to Him for allowing me to be a vessel and a leader in my community for the common good. In the short time I have, I want to express my deepest passion to this good spirit who opens the doors to this day and to this great and awesome leadership, to Mr. Jerry Demmings, Attorney Elizabeth Robey, Assistant to the Mayor Demmings, all District Commissioner's staff, Orange County School Board Directors, which are not here today, but my purpose here today is to bring some initiatives for the gun safety prevention programs that are taking place. The purpose of my visit here today is to inform you that I have started to organize programs that will help implement comprehensive actions for gun violence. Introducing new technology, platform, systems, and equipment to these gun violence prevention programs will enhance the safety and security to our communities with an emphasis on our schools, teachers, and children we all care and love. These platforms are intuitive, intelligent, and easy to use. Our security platform makes it easy to track thermal signatures, monitor analytics, adjust camera angles, manage alerts, and even adjust the unit's sounds and lights. This is a world-class, cloud-based VMS and Surveillance Command Center available at your desk.
Unfortunately, Mr. Cruz, that time does move quickly. Generally speaking, we allow the school board and the school district to take the lead on school-related matters. However, it is a joint partnership between the school district and the other county entities, as well as the community to make sure that the school campuses are as safe as they possibly can be. We will take the information you provided, we'll do some follow-up with you, and where appropriate, work with the school district. Thank you for your presence today.
My door is open. Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, we're going to move to the next speaker, please.
Is Ms. Betts present?
Okay, it does not look like she is present, so we will move to the next speaker. Who's next?
Trevor Hall Jr.
Okay, Mr. Trevor Hall. Are you present? Does not appear that he is present. All right, we'll move to the next speaker.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to share these reflections. I am Tamara Bejarano, Executive Director and Founder of Open Scene, a cultural management agency led by Latina women promoting multiculturalism through diverse artistic and humanistic expressions. Since 2019, and with few resources, we have generated income and connections for theaters, businesses, and more than 100 Latin artists. Imagine what we could do with more. Beyond the Hispanic community, we are also part of an artistic community that wants to grow, and we need to ensure that professional talent living here stays here to form part of the cultural circuits that feed many metropolises and participate, as Open Scene did recently, in important conferences such as APUBS in New York and the International Society of Performing Arts, of which we are fellows, allowing presenters, producers, and audiences to invest and nurture our city's cultural scene. With our Latin American Performing Arts Festival, we have made Orlando an option to present Spanish theater for groups from Chicago, Dallas, New York, and Miami, and bet in technology, even if it is experimental, to eradicate the language barrier. Investing in art and culture is tremendously profitable because we invest in stimulating empathy, imagination, teamwork, emotional intelligence, and in the plurality of perspectives, which results in more sustainable and prosperous societies capable of making better decisions that benefit more people. Therefore, we ask you to support the task force recommendations for TDT funding and the ARC Committee. Together, we can hasten the cultural flourishing of our city beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave the mic, I'm getting my Spanish listening ear. You said your last name so quickly, I couldn't catch it. Can you say it one more time?
The last what?
Your last name.
Tamara Bejarano.
Okay.
Tamara Bejarano.
Thank you very much. All right. I have to ask our colleagues on the board. All right. Mr. Prather, you are recognized.
All right. Terry Prather, 1610 Rock Lake Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32805. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today as Board Chair of Visit Orlando. On behalf of the entire Board of Directors and our CEO, Cassandra Mate, our staff, the 1,400-member organizations, and the nearly 400,000 employees in the industry, we thank you for what you do for our county. I come before you with nearly four decades in the tourism industry. I've had a unique view of the challenges and opportunities the industry has. In 1986, I was on the construction team that built SeaWorld San Antonio. That led to me working in the maintenance department at SeaWorld in 1988. And fast forward, I retired from SeaWorld Orlando in 2015 after being president of the largest marine life theme park in the world. So when I say tourism is an industry of opportunities, I'm living proof of that. At Visit Orlando, Visit Orlando plays a crucial role in this tourism ecosystem of Central Florida. By marketing our community worldwide, our mission is simple, to inspire, promote, and grow global travel to Orlando for economic and community benefit. Yes, community benefit. We focus on promoting the entire region, large and small businesses. While our priority lies in investments that generate overnight visitation, let me assure you that we tirelessly promote all projects to ensure our Orange County sees a strong return on the TDT investment. As the official destination marketing organization for Orange County, Visit Orlando generates $33 in visitor spending for every dollar of TDT invested. As you make recommendations on how to divide the TDT pot, I promise Visit Orlando will be working to grow the pie because the one thing we know about the Orlando experience, it's unbelievably real.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Prather. We're going to move to the next speaker, please.
Next batch of speakers is going to be Gerald Higgins, Bob Miles, Paul Ween, and Mark Riker.
Morning, Mayor and Commissioners of Orange County, Florida. My name is Gerald Higgins, 7018 Old Greenfield Lane, Winter Garden, Florida. Here to discuss the tourism tax. I know it's a difficult decision that you have to make with all those millions of dollars. However, I have some questions as to two of the areas. One is the convention center. Out of 365 days a year, how many days are actually used at the convention center and the capacity percentage-wise? And also the thermostat in there. I've been in there numerous times for HOA expos, and it is extremely cold. Also Camping World Stadium, same thing. What is the amount of days that that is actually used, and at what percent capacity? Additionally, I wanted to talk about Public Works. Public Works, I live in Horizon West, Sector 1, District 1, and it has grown so much, and they are getting further and further behind. If they could possibly ask for an increase in staffing and budget? The same with the Parks Department. They're spending $1.5 million in communities, and we were given a community park with only $400,000 in it. I know they upgraded Barnett Park and made a new skateboard. I think overall, if they could increase their budget and staffing, improve some of the older community parks, and possibly expedite the West Orange Regional Park, because our youth are getting in trouble. We're having problems over there with vandalism and et cetera. We had our two schools broken into, our elementary school and our middle school, since school ended in May. Additionally, I wanted to address the homeless. We've had homeless live in our conservation area, use our clubhouses. We had to have three of them trespassed, and they ended up going to jail. We have problems in our area where the homeless are sleeping in their cars and making it difficult for our residents there and apartment complexes. We don't need another death in our community. We had a bad one in May.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. A lot of questions there. We'll have to follow up with you. I don't have the capacity today to get into all of that, but we hear you.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Demmings and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bob Miles. I live at 1263 Nottingham Street, Orlando, 32803. I'm the president of a company called Bags, or a travel services company here in Orlando. Been here about 30 years, and we are in the travel services business. And so I just wanted to share my perspective of the importance and necessity of supporting our continued investment in the Orange County Convention Center. Today, our company Bags operates in 45 different cities and airports across the country, and with that, a lot of the work that we do is around the movement of people and travelers between convention centers and airports. And so as a result, we have the opportunity to see and visit a lot of convention centers around the country. And as a matter of fact, I spent a little time last night just looking at the number of convention centers I've been to personally and my team in the last two or three years, and there was 21 different convention centers that we've had a chance to be part of. We've also spent time with Convention and Visitors Bureau organizations, and I will tell you that Orlando is the envy of the country in terms of its convention centers. However, I have some questions as to two of the areas. One is the convention center. Out of 365 days a year, how many days are actually used at the convention center and the capacity percentage-wise? And also the thermostat in there. I've been in there numerous times for HOA expos, and it is extremely cold. Also Camping World Stadium, same thing. What is the amount of days that that is actually used, and at what percent capacity? Additionally, I wanted to talk about Public Works. Public Works, I live in Horizon West, Sector 1, District 1, and it has grown so much, and they are getting further and further behind. If they could possibly ask for an increase in staffing and budget, the same with the Parks Department. They're spending $1.5 million in communities, and we were given a community park with only $400,000 in it. I know they upgraded Barnett Park and made a new skateboard. I think overall, if they could increase their budget and staffing, improve some of the older community parks, and possibly expedite the West Orange Regional Park, because our youth are getting in trouble. We're having problems over there with vandalism and et cetera. We had our two schools broken into, our elementary school and our middle school, since school ended in May. Additionally, I wanted to address the homeless. We've had homeless live in our conservation area, use our clubhouses. We had to have three of them trespassed, and they ended up going to jail. We have problems in our area where the homeless are sleeping in their cars and making it difficult for our residents there and apartment complexes. We don't need another death in our community. We had a bad one in May.
All right, thank you, Mr. Higgins. A lot of questions there. We'll have to follow up with you. Don't have the capacity today to get into all of that, but we hear you.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Demmings and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bob Miles. I live at 1263 Nottingham Street, Orlando, 32803. I'm the President of a company called Bags, or a travel services company here in Orlando. Been here about 30 years, and we are in the travel services business. And so I just wanted to share my perspective of the importance and necessity of supporting our continued investment in the Orange County Convention Center. Today, our company Bags operates in 45 different cities and airports across the country. And with that, a lot of the work that we do is around the movement of people and travelers between convention centers and airports. And so as a result, we have the opportunity to see and visit a lot of convention centers around the country. And as a matter of fact, I spent a little time last night just looking at the number of convention centers I've been to personally in my team in the last two or three years, and there was 21 different convention centers that we've had a chance to be part of. We've also spent time with Convention and Visitors Bureau organizations. And I will tell you that Orlando is the envy of the country in terms of its convention center. And all of them are gunning for us in terms of making investments and trying to compete against Orlando in the marketplace. And so I'm here just to give my support to the further investments and contributions to the Orange County Convention Center, because it's vitally important for the tourism industry that we all here support and have really benefited from greatly over the many, many years here. So thank you very much for the time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miles, for your comments. We're going to move to the next speaker, please. You're recognized, sir.
Yes, good morning. My name is Paul Ween, 10946 Emerald Chase Drive in Orlando. I am on your Animal Services Advisory Board. I'm the attorney member. We wrote to you folks back in February about backyard breeding. We haven't heard anything back, so we're here to ring the bell again. Some of the problems I wish to highlight. The ordinances make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial kennels. A non-commercial kennel is not held to the same standard. There are no care and facility requirements, only that they not be a nuisance. Commercial kennels are held to the standard of having care and facility requirements. However, if you decide to enforce care and facility requirements against the kennel, you have to prove that it's commercial. However, in order to do that, you have to show that the kennel makes more than 25% of its income from the breeding of animals. In order to do this, though, you're going to have to use the documents, the financial records of the kennel, to prove it. So if they have bad records or no records, you have to prove by a preponderance of the evidence that they make more than 25% of their income from breeding animals. I suspect that you're not going to be able to do that, and probably would not do a forensic audit in order to make a fine of $500 per violation. Additionally, I think that you have no incentive to do this, given the notorious cash business that breeding of animals is. So for all intent and purposes, with that definition and with that standard of proof, you have a de facto immunization of backyard breeders under our current ordinances as they exist. In addition, under our ordinances, any residence, be it a condo, be it a townhome, be it a single-family residence, can have 20 animals without any distinction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ween. Unfortunately, you don't have a lot of time today, but we look forward to working with our Animal Services Advisory Committee to help us shape public policy. And so you all continue your work. Thank you for your service there. Look forward to having more dialogue in this regard.
I hope so. And I hope you do take up rabbits, because they're a burgeoning area of abuse, and there's no regulation of them. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor. Really quickly, I just wanted to thank you and your entire advisory board for staying engaged in this. I know that I sent out a reply when we got the recommendation with my support, and then followed up with another email asking if I needed to do a memo with a discussion agenda item, and was told that it would be something that was in process through staff. So I do want to, I think it's important that we make sure that we have some kind of end date on what that discussion is going to look like, or else I will submit another memo for a discussion item in order to be able to put this on the agenda.
And Mayor, I can give the date. I did respond back saying that we're, first we have the day stock, and then in the latter part this year. So that's, I was looking at my calendar, so we're, I believe it's November timeframe, but there were two other items that staff is currently working on, that some of which you're familiar with.
Thank you for letting us know.
Those ordinances are coming forth, so you have two other Animal Services items.
I believe members of the board will be coming around to see most of the Commissioners individually. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We just have a busy agenda this morning, so again, stick to the two minutes so that we can get through it. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to move us forward.
Thank you. And by the way, we did get notice. I think we're now officially in the planning stages of the new kennel.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to the next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor Demmings.
Good morning.
Board of County Commissioners, my name is Mark Reischer, 6001 Destination Parkway, Orlando, Florida, which is the Hilton Orlando. Just wanted to make a statement that the process I've gone through has been very enlightening, Mayor Demmings. I congratulate you and everyone who participated in it. And I wanted to state that we stand in support of the findings of the TDT Citizens Board, especially the ranking of the convention center. The convention center really is the lifeblood of I Drive. I was the former chairman of the CRA, which Mayor Demmings appointed me to. In 1998, we started with a million dollars of increment. In 2022, we had $22 million, and we're able now to expand the uses just beyond transportation to deal with housing and community issues. One of the great things that came out of the board before CRA sunsets, it's now capped at $22 million. It's going to generate $24 million this year. And those dollars can be used for other services. Anything above $22 million, 75% of those dollars can be used for general administration or for the general purposes of the county. We hope you'll take a serious consideration in looking at the housing needs and the transportation, additional transportation needs with those dollars. In terms of what the convention center can do, the convention center drives hotel revenue. In 2022, the ad valorem taxes of lodging alone in Orange County were in excess of $450 million. We had hundreds of millions of dollars in sales tax for just lodging, and over a billion dollars in sales tax from the hospitality industry. These dollars need to be appropriated correctly. We have issues in this community. We have transportation issues. We have housing issues. In terms of labor, you know, the market has heard, the industry has heard the call. When we talk about lower wages, the industry is working on it. Disney pays a higher wage. Universal pays a higher wage. Our starting wage for housekeeping is at $18 now at Hilton Orlando. So the industry has heard that call and responded to the marketplace to provide a living wage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reiger. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This next batch, I'm going to call five names. Again, folks, line up by the edge of the wall. First name is Ken Shields, followed by Eddie Morazin. Apologize for butchering that one. Nelson Bettencourt, Timothy Ayer, and Eugene Staccato.
My name is Ken Shields. I live at 11936 Fiori Drive, Orlando, Florida. I am an eight-year volunteer at Orange County Animal Service. I want to relate to you some of the things that I've witnessed relative to backyard breeders and other additional type of informal breeding. In 2022, there are almost 15,000 dogs and cats impounded Orange County Animal Services. At best, I can estimate, hundreds of female dogs enter Ocas every year with the ominous signs of being abused by backyard and other similar types of breeders. Female dogs enter with the signs and symptoms such as mammary tissue distended, swollen, inflamed, and infected, wounds and scars on their heads, face, legs, backs, backside, eye infections, emaciated, severely undernourished, a lack of grooming and matted hair, yellow legs, abdomen, backsides from sitting and laying in their cages in early urine, and sometimes feces. Canine teeth are actually filed down. I've seen that once before. Men require emergent treatment. As far as the other problems, behaviorally, we see them come in, a lot of dogs come in with fear. Many of them are backyard breeder females. Fear aggression, human aggression, bite history, and/or a general lack of socialization. Common among the pups are parasite and parvovirus infections, hip dysplasia, orthopedic problems, hearing loss, eye issues and blindness, future birthing difficulties, respiratory issues. After being sold, pups are often not socialized with people, especially children and strangers, as well as other dogs and cats. They're not trained at all. Some can be used as fighting dogs or bait dogs, and they're often inhumanly killed or cast out on the street to die by the breeders because of genetic or congenital defects, imperfections, or they're just not saleable. How many of these dogs eventually end up at Ocas through no fault of their own as bite dogs who have bitten injured humans, other dogs, and cats?
All right, thank you, sir, for your comments this morning.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the county administrators' comments, we'll have a work session at some point in the future. All right, thank you.
Just a tip. Thank you.
We're going to move to the next speaker, please.
Good morning. Eddie Moritzin, resident of 539 Kittredge Jive, Orlando, Florida, 32805, in the communities of Westlake. I'm here as President of Lift Orlando, and really here to thank all of you, the board, the committee, for the work and the conversations that have been had about the issues that are so important in our community. But with special emphasis, I'd like to thank you for your consideration of Camping World Stadium's proposal, because the idea of a public venue that also cares for the well-being of its neighbors is something that is unique and leading the country. We think the hope that we've been able to see as we pursued our mission to advance the well-being of our county by ensuring that our communities, our highest priority neighborhoods, are advancing prosperity and well-being for all of our residents. Some of the toughest problems our city faces, we are addressing as housing, education, economic viability, and long-term prosperity for all of our residents, including healthcare, is something that we're doing because of the leadership and generosity of the engine that is Camping World Stadium in the heart of 32805. I don't know where we'd be today were it not for the connections, opportunities, relationships, and leadership of Camping World Stadium. And I don't know where we would be tomorrow as we pursue our vision of neighborhoods where children grow up with hope and return with joy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moritzin. We're going to move to the next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I attended, my name is Nelson Bettencourt, 5350 East Scaly Street, Orlando, Florida, 32812. I attended the last two meetings of the TDT Citizens Advisory Task Force. I want to ground my comments on the following quotation. Art is our one true global language. It speaks to our need to reveal, heal, and transform. It transcends our ordinary lives and lets us imagine what is possible. Art creates culture. Culture creates community, and community creates humanity. So I strongly support the funding approved by the task force for Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs. Next, based on the task force not funding the renovation of Wells-Bilt Museum and the construction of the Zora campus, two organizations that embrace and reflect a strong and important identity of culture and community in Orange County, a new criteria for evaluating entities that promote cultural values versus those that have a more direct economic effect should be considered, developed, and put in place. Next, economics professor Kelly Samra, who's here today at UCF, offered to make available a number of economics PhD graduate students and international economists for such an endeavor. And finally, the BCC should continue to engage with task force and community members and explore their ideas and suggestions to expand other uses of TDT funds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. We're going to move to the next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the County Commission, my name is Timothy Ayers. I live at 1291 Plumgrass Circle in Ocoee, Commissioner Moore's district, District 2, but I'm employed in my friend's district, District 6, Commissioner Scott. So I guess he pays, help pays the mortgage, if you will. I represent the residents who live along Tampa Avenue, both to the north and south of Camping World Stadium. We are so popular that over 350,000 visitors come to our neighborhood annually for either a one or three-day residency permit. I'm not sure which. At the intersectionality of the issues regarding TDT funds is what Camping World Stadium and Florida Citrus Sports has done relative to my organization, and that's their support of our housing program, our Reclaiming the Dream Housing Program, which we have undertaken over the last three to four years regarding strengthening of single-family houses in the neighborhoods of Westlake. Thanks to the City of Orlando, Valley National Bank, and Florida Citrus Sports, we have spent over $800,000 reclaiming vacant and abandoned housing in the neighborhoods of Westlake. And so we would encourage this body's consideration and support of their application for the use of TDT funds. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ayers. Next speaker, please.
Eugene Staccato, 331 Roswell Avenue. A little comment initially. Writing these notes out in that hallway earlier about how we're going to build new Taj Mahals and expand existing ones, I looked to my right, and there's a homeless guy with his basket. And it's just really interesting to see the dichotomy of all the suits here versus this person pushing a cart. And this is not an uncommon thing. We all see it, and we just kind of let it go over our heads. My talk today is about number four. Four people, you are the gatekeepers of the budget. Four Commissioners today can change the future of Orange County by making a motion to remove the six highlighted projects that you see on the sheet I put on the overhead. Place the money in escrow, and next Florida Legislature session, introduce a change of the Florida Statute 125.0104 to allow on the TDT monies be used to help the source, the housing and transit crisis that we have. And this would go far to help the workers in the tourism industry. Orange County is in a housing crisis. The polarization of wealth of the tourist workers are treading water, while the in crowd sees the TDT as their own personal piggy bank. If this passes today, essentially, you're just telling the workers to go eat cake. So four of you can make the difference today. Remove the proposed highlighted items I have on my overhead sheet. Place the money in a holding spot, and that would be going towards helping the future of housing and transit. The money is the people's money. It's not the personal piggy bank of a few venues and corporate leaders. It's our money, as all tax money is as we pay our wages or taxes. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. We're going to move to the next speaker, please.
All right, next batch of speakers is going to start with Cara Blanco, followed by Terrence Hunter, Rick Walsh, Barry BJ Taylor, and Michael Perkins.
Cara Blanco, 6016 Montel Court. After I spoke here in June about the county noise ordinance, Mayor Demmings admitted that there were challenges in getting it enforced, and the county attorneys were concerned about limiting freedom of speech. And our state's legislature has already considered reasonable restrictions of content, time, and manner when DeSantis signed in the Loud Music from Vehicles law last year. It's overreaching at 25 feet, but it addresses volume. People can play whatever they want. It's at an acceptable volume. My neighborhood has over 450 homes within half a mile from the Orlando city limits, yet our noise ordinance is 10 times more at 500 feet during the day and 150 feet at night distance requirements. And I haven't met one county employee in the six Vision 2050 meetings I've attended that can explain why. Yet we pay, yet we don't pay 10 times less in taxes. Noise is a noise, whether it's road noise off Golden Rod, modified mufflers in Horizons West, music from a nightclub housed in an old building in Orla Vista, or a neighbor playing the Barbie song four times in a row in Pine Hills. When it becomes excessive, it becomes a quality of life issue. I've looked at both Vision 2050 and Orange Code documents and found no mention of implementation of an amended noise ordinance. I'm not suggesting to vote against Vision 2050. There is a reason why you are seated where you are today. You have been entrusted to be our voice and act in our collective best interests. And as the county prepares to grow to over 2 million, and this is grow upwards, not outwards, I urge you to consider
All right, thank you, Ms. Blanco.
Amending the noise ordinance. Thank you.
We hear you. All right, next speaker, please.
My name is Terrence Hunter. My address is 250 Southwest Ivanhoe Boulevard, Orlando, Florida, 32804. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the important impact Orange County's TDT dollars have made in our community and will, and will make, rather, with the increased funding recommended for Orange County's Arts and Cultural Affairs, United Arts of Central Florida, and the Application Review Committee. For more than a decade, I have been directly affected by TDT funding. For the past year, I've served as a CEO at Central Florida Community Arts, where TDT funding directly supports our organization. CFC Arts boasts the country's largest community orchestra and community choir. Our community is rapidly growing, and with it, our company, as we keep pace with the growing need for elder services, community wellness, and an ever-increasing number of tourists. And we have quite simply outgrown our capacity and are trying to secure a new facility. The average cost to build a 500-seat theater can be upwards of $25 million. The current cap on Arts and Cultural Affairs funding for facilities is $500,000 per grant per year. And the TDT art starts at $2 million to $10 million. TDT can support an increase to bring Arts and Cultural Affairs funding, facilities cap to $2 million. TDT funds also support the Venue Subsidy Program through United Arts. That helps with temporary space rental, not only for our organization, but for the 46% that are diverse, emerging organizations too, to elevate their performance options. Last year, 25% of the requests were unmet, and with rising costs and greater awareness of the program, more TDT funds can support more of those requests. Orange County, Orange County's cultural nonprofits generate more than $265 million in direct economic impact annually. Funding the arts is a strategic investment that yields substantial economic benefits in job growth and tourism. By recognizing the vital role the arts play in economic development, we can cultivate a vibrant, creative ecosystem that pushes the boundaries of what is possible and creates broad-based prosperity for all. Thank you very much for the work of the Task Force, the Commissioners, the Mayor, and your continued support of arts and culture. We hope you will support the recommended increase in TDT funding to Arts and Cultural Affairs.
All right, thank you. Noted. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Rick Walsh. I'm at 10:30 North Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I am a 50-year UCF volunteer and have been privileged to serve in various roles at UCF and in our region. From my years as an FTU, UCF student in the 70s, to serving on the Board of Trustees as a member and chair for 10 years, I've marveled at the success symbiotic relationship of UCF and our region's expanding economy. The UCF talent pipeline and the 88,000 alums that live in Orange County have helped us to drive our aerospace and defense industry, gained the envy of the nation with our $7 billion a year simulation and training industry, provided the staffing and leadership of our world-renowned hospitality, tourism, and theme experience industry, and is providing the talent and research for medical care and medical technology innovation in Central Florida. When I look at UCF's proposal for the TDT dollars through the lens of a past Chair of the Board, I would ask you to consider three critical items that I think are important to the discussion. First of all, athletics. UCF athletics has been built on private funds, as state universities in Florida cannot use the state education and general funding dollars for athletic facilities and operations. Second, the UCF lawyers and Orange County's lawyers agree that the UCF athletics proposal is clearly eligible for TDT funding under Section 125.01 in Florida statutes, and is considered a useful lawful use of funds. And third, and very important, the ROI. The ROI of investing with UCF has an impressive history penned by very strong partnerships, private and public players that support Team Orlando and our Department of Defense partners, the UCF College of Medicine, and the exciting growth of the medical city, the UCF and Valencia Downtown Campus, and the innovation job creation taking place every day, and as the nationally-recognized UCF Business Incubation Program gets underway. These partnerships are local, they're appropriate, and they align with the region's strategies.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Time goes quickly. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Demmings. Good morning, Commission. My name is Barry Pierre Taylor Jr. Let me raise this a little bit, sorry. My name is Barry Pierre Taylor Jr., 1700 Jake Street, Orlando, Florida, 32814, and I'm here to show my support for UCF athletics. I'm better known as BJ Taylor within the Orlando community. I attended local Boone High School, where I was the 8A Player of the Year in Basketball, Mr. Florida Basketball Runner-Up, and still hold the county record for points per game in the high school. With that being said, when I left Boone, I had the opportunity to attend many other schools around the country, whether it was some of your quote-unquote bigger names, which they're not anymore, Florida, Florida State, whatever you want to say. I chose to stay home and stay in Orlando at UCF, because the Orlando community means the world to me. It's where I got my start. And now I still am able to bring value to myself, bring value to others, do the work that I'm able to do now that I've retired from playing basketball. I'm a national college basketball analyst with ESPN and CBS Sports, so with that platform, I'm able to travel all around the country and speak to individuals from Texas, West Virginia, Oklahoma, different states all around the country. And I can tell you that wherever I go, with UCF's transition to the Big 12, there's nowhere nobody else is more excited to go than Orlando, right? If you had to choose between Norman, Oklahoma, Waco, Texas, Lubbock, Texas, we're all going to Orlando, right? Just me. But I love this school. I love this community. I know there are multiple prospects that are trying to bid on this money, but I can only speak to the impact that UCF has had on my life, and I know with my peers and my friends, positively impact thousands of lives, we're able to create a lot of value for ourselves while we were at school, and we are able to be an inspiration to others in our community. So, thank you for your time.
All right, BJ Taylor. We like your enthusiasm. Thank you, and congratulations on a very successful career as well. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
I got a follow, BJ Taylor. Michael Perkins, 13644 Sun Shower Circle, Orlando, 32828. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and our great thanks to Mayor Demmings for creating the Task Force, TDT Task Force, to look at the expenditure of funds. And I'm not here today to discuss the decisions that the Task Force made. As President of the Board of the Christian Service Center, I feel compelled to speak to you all today about how the use of these funds in general needs to be carefully considered. Our community has so many pressing needs, from public transportation to affordable housing, that to expand, expend this tax revenue on any project that does not further the interest of the entire community must be very carefully considered. I encourage this Board today to take the bold step to reconsider the funding options presented in light of the information about alternative uses for the funds that were presented to the TDC Council earlier last week. More importantly, I urge you to stress, to stress to our local legislators, the importance of changing the statute to allow for more freedom for all counties in the state to utilize these funds as they need them. Yesterday, I spoke with four people who live on the streets of Orlando. They are all struggling, recently put on the streets due to increasing rents and transportation issues. As we consider utilization of these limited tax revenues in the future, we need to consider how to make this community better for all of its residents, and think carefully before we create even more low-paying jobs and figure out a way for these individuals to live in affordable housing and get to work on time. Let's make Central Florida unbelievably livable. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perkins, and I believe that I can say this on behalf of our Board, all of us, when we get to the point where we will make some decisions about how we utilize the TDT funds, we will make those decisions, taking into consideration how it will have the greatest and the best impact on our community.
We appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next speaker, please.
Next batch of speakers. Mayor is going to start with Eric Gray, followed by Ella Wood, Geraldine Thompson, Maria Triscari,
All right, Mr. Gray, you're up.
Thank you. Eric Gray, TDT Task Force member from District Four, 921 Spring Island Way, Sagittarius, Chips Ahoy cookies, long walks on the beach, blood type, black and gold, and sometimes orange and blue. I hope you will send the Vision 2050 work wonderfully led by Alberto Vargas here at Orange County to our brethren in Tallahassee. Also, I just wanted to say I so appreciate being given the opportunity to serve on the Hotel Tax Task Force. Because of Mayor Demmings' vision, other counties in Florida are talking about doing the same thing now. The Collier County Commission just discussed this in session last week, which is exciting. Something about our proceedings reminded me of a story my grandfather used to tell. Soon after Florida introduced the lottery in 1986, a family in Grandaddy Bo's neighborhood won about a million dollars. It was pretty exciting for their neighborhood, and everyone was excited for them, and he told them in his own ways, like, "You should get a lawyer, and you need to get one of those ticker tape guys." And he, he said ticker tape guys because he grew up during the Great Depression, so anybody that worked in investments was a ticker tape guy. And he, you know, encouraged them to do that, but of course they didn't, and they had their uncle, I think it was an accountant or somebody, helped them spend their money, and they spent on a bunch of shiny things, and he was very disappointed, because they had to go right back to their regular jobs, and they blew all through it. The surplus on top of the reserve of the hotel tax revenue in Orange County is pretty big. It's kind of like we already won the lottery here. We just have to decide how we're going to spend it. I wrote a lot of thoughts in the first survey the Task Force took. Unfortunately, those thoughts weren't shared until a few minutes before the final vote was called. That's okay. I also shared a few ideas on how to invest the funds that I thought were pretty good and are legal within the statute, but no one ever really discussed them. I didn't even get a single question, which was disappointing, but that's okay. I appreciate just really being included. It was a real honor to be part of it, and I just wanted to leave one last piece of research. I just sent you all an email that includes 10 of the top economic impact analysts in the country, none of them in Florida, you know, ticker tape guys and girls who can tell us what best to do with our winnings, if you want to use it. I also bought myself a Mega Millions ticket and be happy to donate this to Orange County should I win, all the proceedings of $820 million, and hopefully that'll be invested really wisely as well. So, I think it'll be exciting. Thank you.
We got witnesses here. You heard him say, you know, if he wins, wins the Mega Million, he's donating it to Orange County. All right, all right, next speaker, please.
Ella Wood, 1833 Biscayne Drive, Winter Park. Good morning. I also served on the TDT Citizen Advisory Task Force for District Five. Many of you also know me as the Political Director for Unite Here Local 737, one of the Hospitality Workers Union's in town. I wanted to speak briefly because I think all of us are familiar with these struggles that come from having a tourism-based economy, but I think there is a tendency among those of us who are critical of our low-wage economy to feel that that's inevitable when we have such a strong tourism base for our economy. And I wanted to share a couple of things that make me think, we don't need to shed our tourism roots or get away from a tourism economy if we want to escape the problems of our low wages. I wanted to look at just one comparison. Las Vegas and Orlando are number one and two for the number of hotel rooms in the world, the world. But look at the people who clean those hotel rooms. If you look at the median wages for housekeepers and maids in each of those two cities, these are statistics from a year ago, the median wage for Orlando is $13.89. The median wage for Las Vegas is $18.22. That's even though Las Vegas has a lower cost of living than we have here. You see the same pattern with different differentials for janitors, for dishwashers, for every kind of cook. So I think when we spend this TDT money, I want to imagine what could happen if we were using that money to lead our economy in that direction. And I really wanted to draw your attention to two significant things from the Task Force. One, the amount of conversation about how else we could spend the money, and two, the overwhelming consensus, I believe it was 17 to 2, that the way we assess these projects is missing key things around community needs, workforce needs, jobs. I think you have an opportunity to make sure that conversation goes somewhere without throwing out the results, all the work that we did, to add back some of those considerations before you make the final decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wood. Next speaker, please. We have Senator Thompson, deference to you. I'm going to give you three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Since you're a legislator, we depend on in Tallahassee.
Thank you, Mayor Demmings, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm Geraldine Thompson. I represent the West Orange community as a member of the Florida Senate. I am the Vice Chair of the Orange County Legislative Delegation, and I'm the founder of the Wells-Bilt Museum of African-American History and Culture. And I'm here to speak for more TDT funds being devoted to arts and culture through the ARC. Without the support that many of the smaller organizations like the Wells-Bilt receive through ARC, it will always be a situation of them that's got or them that gets. So it's very important that we have additional funds for arts and culture. I shared with the Citizens Advisory Task Force that Mayor Demmings set up, that people are in search of authentic experiences related to culture. And every March, the first week of March, people go to Selma, Alabama, for the reenactment of Bloody Sunday, the march again across the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and hotel rooms fill up in Selma, in Montgomery, in Birmingham, and even into Tennessee. So funding for arts and culture provides another opportunity for expanded tourism here in Orange County. And when people come to Orange County and they're coming to Orlando, there are certain expectations in terms of what the venues are going to be like. And venues west of Division should not suffer in comparison to venues east of Division. And so we have to look at our brand and what it is that we want to be known for, and I think that we have an opportunity to be known as a destination for culture and authentic Now it is even more important when we have accounts of history that suggest that enslaved people benefited from their captivity because they learned skills that they could use for their benefit. So you're going to need museums, you're going to need cultural centers, you're going to need campuses like the one proposed for Eatonville to present accurate, comprehensive, and authentic accounts of African-American history. These institutions are going to be even more important. With regard to Eatonville, I envision a two-part ticket, for lack of a better word, where you can see two venues for one price, and you share the revenue. So I am asking today that with the TDT funds that you have available, that there be increased funding for arts and culture through ARC. And thank you for the opportunity and for the additional moment that you gave me, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. We're going to be counting on our legislative delegation in Tallahassee. All right, next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Demmings. Commissioners Comchiller Diamond. I'm Maria Triscari, President and CEO of the International Drive Resort Area Chamber of Commerce, which is home to 135 lodging facilities encompassing 54,000 rooms, which is 40% of all the hotel rooms in Orange, Osceola, and Seminole County, hundreds of restaurants, attractions, six major theme parks, 90,000 employees, and the world-renowned Orange County Convention Center, Orange County's major economic engine. The I Drive Corridor serves as the economic hub for the Southwest Region, providing jobs in over 10% of Orange County's tax base, which pays for schools, roads, and other infrastructure needs. We are the lifeblood of the community, and the Orange County Convention Center is the fuel for this economic engine. The I Drive Chamber of Commerce strongly supports the recommendations of both the TDT Citizen Advisory Task Force and the Tourist Development Council, who made the Orange County Convention Center master plan, the top priority project for the use of TDT funds. This project is shovel-ready and is imperative for economic growth, allowing the Convention Center to stay competitive in a very competitive market. And as you know, the return on investment at the Orange County Convention Center is well beyond the impressive number of employees and $3 billion economic impact. That ROI does not take into account the very strong economic region that centers around it. take into account the very strong economic region that centers around it, the 90,000 employees, the hundreds of hotels, restaurants, retail outlets, and theme parks that have been built around the nucleus of the Convention Center, and the $4 billion of new development that is planned for the future, much of which is predicated on the completion of the Orange County Convention Center. Now that we've moved beyond COVID-19, we're ready to move forward. Today, while the cities have moved forward with their plans, Orange County Convention Center is sitting idle, and 14 other cities are making moves to acquire our market share, spending billions of dollars on new convention centers and enhancing existing facilities. The time is now. Our future is at stake. Thank you for your support in moving our community forward and supporting the Orange County Convention Center master plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Triscari. We'll move to the next speaker. Speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Demings and County Commissioner. Good to see you all today, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to share some perspectives on our business and the impact of the Convention Center here in Orange County. My name is Rich Bradley, 592 West Palm Valley Drive, and President of a small business, a family-owned business, Original Orlando Tours. And so we not only have our own business, but our goal is to show guests who come to Orlando the rest of the county, the rest of the area. And so what we do is create commerce ourselves by taking people to other restaurants and to attractions around town that maybe they wouldn't have heard of. I shared the story with the TDT Citizens Advisory Committee that when COVID came, as we do bus tours and walking tours, our bus tours were wiped out because nobody was coming to the Convention Center. Nobody was really doing any conferences at hotels. And that amounted to 88% of our revenue. That showed us how important the Convention Center and the hotels on I Drive are to our business. But as I've listened to a lot of speakers through this process, one of the things that stood out to me was something that Bob Miles from Bag said earlier, and Maria just kind of underscored as well. And that's that there's a target on Central Florida's back. Other cities, other regions are coming for us. And we not only needed to keep up with the Joneses, we are the head of that pack, but that is not guaranteed to us. I want to share just a couple of quick comments. For the second year in a row, Dubai was crowned the number-one destination by, based on millions of real and unbiased reviews by TripAdvisor. And according to Forbes, Dubai's success is attributed to significant efforts put in by the Vice President and Prime Minister of the UAE to promote it. Also, probably you saw last week that Oklahoma is going to create a resort that is the size of the Magic Kingdom. And you would say, well, who's gonna go vacation in Oklahoma? But if you think about it, years ago, people said, who's gonna go to the swamps of Orlando for a theme park? So I ask you to please keep the TDT focus on restoring or continue our greatness here in the theme park industry. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Thel Mueller, who's the next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. Next set of speakers starts with Myra Escobar, followed by Donna Jesse, Dustin Lowry, Alexis Martinez, and Courtney Hatfield.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Myra Escobar. I live on 346 Fannery Street, Davenport, Florida. I have worked at the Convention Center, Orange County Convention Center, for ongoing 25 years. The Convention Center is not only important to me, but also to my family and community. Almost everyone that I know has a job related to OCC. There are hotel worker, restaurant cook and server, tradesman working for decorator, like Freeman GES, I Drive host, bartender, bus driver, and so on. Even though our job and company are different, the one thing we have in common is the business level of OCCC drive our wage. The more OCCC has to offer, the most business will increase, and everyone in the community benefit. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Escobar. We're going to move to the next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Donna Jesse. My address is 1015 Goffside Court, Kissimmee, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the Orange County Convention Center. I have worked for the Orange County Convention Center public service provider for over 23 years. I started there as an on-call and part-time employee. I didn't become full-time until seven years later. During my 23 years there, my income was always affected by business at the Orange County Convention Center. The more business booked, the better opportunity I had to take care of my children and maintain health insurance. Recently, I have transferred to the sales department, and for the first time in 23 years, I have a steady schedule and can rely on a steady paycheck. In my opinion, any and all plans to increase business at the Orange County Convention Center is a huge win. Many more employees will have the opportunity to increase their income and make their lives better and lives of their families better. Thank you.
So, Ms. Jesse, before you leave, I'm just curious, I don't know the answer to this question, did any of your superiors direct you to come speak this morning? Are you speaking?
No, I'm speaking because I've had to work multiple jobs in order to maintain my family's income, health insurance, and provide for them. And so now, for the first time that we're getting more business and that I'm able to be full-time and have a steady income, I'm able to provide better for my family, and I want other people that work there to have the same opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to check. All right, we'll go to the next speaker, please.
I'm Alexis Martinez, and I'm gonna give my minutes to Courtney Hatfield.
We cannot transfer time during the session.
Yeah, okay. In effort of time, we are gonna try to combine. We're here to talk on the same subject.
Okay.
So I can, I'm gonna speak for us. But she works on our HR department.
Okay.
So my name is Courtney Hatfield. I'm the complex hotel manager at the Embassy Suites on I Drive. I work, I live at 500 Maguire Park Place, Ocoe 34761. I'm actually here to, I'm here to continue my support for the expansion of the Convention Center, and the main reason being for my team members. The Convention Center is vital in keeping our team members employed, as well as competitive wages. So as Mr. Riker noted, our housekeeping, our housekeepers and our hardest-working employers in our hotels, which I believe are now the highest-paid hourly team member. Someone made a comment about last year's wages. I'm proud to say those are no longer our wages. And the support from my HR team here, that can testify to that. But the big reason behind that is because of the business we're able to bring in through the Convention Center and to our ownership and being able to go to them and fight these fights, it's vital that we move forward with the expansion of the Convention Center. So we can maintain these wages, not only maintain, continue our plan to increase next year, where we will be beating Las Vegas, and I truly believe in that. And I work for Hilton Hotels again and Embassy Suites I Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to go to the next speaker.
Good morning. Dustin Lowry, 8421 Narcousie Road, Orlando, Florida, 32827. I am the Area Director of Sales for the Embassy Suites Icon Park, Homewood Suites in Hampton and International Drive Convention Center. I'm here today to support the Orange County Convention Center and the TDT taxes. I get a rare glimpse daily on working on International Drive to see the impacts that those events make daily to our staffing levels at hotels, restaurants, and all that on International Drive. I also get a rare glimpse into the competition that's out there. I know that we still face those challenges and headwinds towards that competition, and not only with cities that have comparable-sized convention centers, but those that are expanding in the near future. I think the Convention Center has maintained this innovation always, that they are staying ahead of their time. And I think that's innovations needed now, not only to keep and maintain those larger events that we currently have, but those in the future where we're competing against expanding convention centers. Thank you for your time.
So a quick question for you.
Yes.
What's the average pay for your housekeepers there?
They are currently at 17, currently.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next speaker, please.
Next batch of speakers is going to start with Kelly Semrad, followed by, apologize ahead of time for this one, Megery Durville, Brian Small, Robert Agusa, and Joshua Wallach.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Dr. Kelly Semrad. I reside at 3111 Amalfi Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32820. Today, I'm speaking on the TDT tax. I am an Associate Professor of Tourism and Hospitality, and this is an unusual circumstance today. Usually, we see a room full of people who are in need of help, and today, we see a room full of suits. I'm speaking on behalf of the people. The tourism industry, I believe in it. I'm a professor of it. It has opportunity. It also comes with so many calamities for the people that work in it, people who don't make a livable wage. $18 an hour sounds great, particularly from a different generation of time, but our livable wage is about $23 in the county. So we have people that we heard about the average hourly rate is about $13.80 for our housekeepers in this area. I'm not going to advocate to change what you're going to recommend today. I don't, I don't think that that's going to come to fruition. What I would really like to see is a change in that rubric of how we grade, where the TDT goes to. Let's look at the rubric. You have, you have a great institution, University of Central Florida, are the first in the country for tourism and hospitality management education, 76 PhDs in that building. Let us help, you know, let us come up with a rubric where the economic impact benefits the community of tourism, the tourists, the residents who live here, the employees, and the businesses. We are a leader in tourism in Orange County, in the world. Let us be a leader in how we decide where this awesome money, where it goes to, to benefit the stakeholders of the tourism industry. Let us find a way to benefit the people that are struggling to get to work, the residents who are sitting in traffic jams, the people who cannot afford homes, our waterways that are impaired. Let us find a way, and let us help you. It's what we do. We research the tourism and hospitality industry. Please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We'll move to the next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Madgery Durville, and I'm at 4903 Silver Oaks Village. I'm actually partners with Courtney over at the Embassy Suites and HR. And I'd like to say my transition from Fort Lauderdale to Orlando has been quite amazing. I appreciate the transparency and the attention of the board. I didn't necessarily was involved in all of that in Broward County, so it's nice to see and refreshing. I am also in support of the Orange County Convention Center master plan. I'd like to say in HR, we get a lot of different conversations from our team members, and as the Convention Center slows down, we get a lot of those, why we're not getting any hours. I do have a lot of team members that also do work at the Convention Centers as well, and they have a lot of feedback in reference to them not being as busy as they should. So I am just putting it out there that we should continue with that plan.
And which, which property did you say you work for?
Well, I'm complex, so I'm at the Embassy Suites I Drive and also the Disney Springs Orlando.
Okay, thank you.
A double tree, sorry.
All right, next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Brian Small, and I live at 14926 Hoxmore Run Circle, Orlando, Florida, 32828. I'm the General Manager at Point Orlando, and I fully support the Orange County Convention Center master plan as a top priority for the use of the TDT funds. We must remain competitive. I know you've heard it over and over and again, and I'll repeat it again. We must remain competitive. Point Orlando just invested $32 million in the first phase of our redevelopment, and we are in the process of starting the second phase. Our investment has brought in new, exciting restaurants, which has added new jobs. The investment at Point Orlando has also improved our guest experience and prepares us for the addition of the new conventions, our high-end conventions that the Convention Center will bring. Again, I support the Orange County Convention Center master plan as a top priority, and I've said it before, but we must remain competitive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Comptroller Diamond. My name is Robert Agusa, 6675 Westwood Boulevard, Suite 210, Orlando, Florida, 32821. As the President and CEO of the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association, I would like to first say thank you to you, Mayor, for including our organization, along with so many other diverse organizations within our community, on the Orange County TDT Advisory Citizens Task Force. Upon conclusion of the task force, we are pleased to see the TDT task force has put forth several recommendations that meet the current guidelines of the Florida statutes. Now, as you consider the task force report today and its recommendations, I strongly implore each of you to consider and support reinvesting the TDT into the economic engines that grow the hospitality industry and consistently produces a measurable return on investment for Orange County and its residents. The proper investment of TDT creates jobs, the sales tax collection, and makes our community a better place to live, work, and play. And speaking of taxes, I would like to take a moment to ensure that some of the fiscal and economic impacts that tourism has generated for our local economy is reiterated, because I believe that they were overshadowed during many of the discussions in the task force meetings. So recently, Visit Orlando announced that Orlando brought 74 million visitors in 2022, who all paid our 6.5% sales tax. Did you know that in 2022, that more than $375 million was collected just in sales tax from hotel room nights? That's it. Additionally, did you know that these lodging properties also generate a total of more than 300, or sorry, 600, $465, sorry, million dollars in property taxes? That goes towards our local schools, Orange County government, including $182 million, to our local fire and police and EMS, as well as over $8.5 million in library operating fees. And so when you combine these taxes, it's over $840 million in revenue for Orange County. So as we look forward, I would like for the County Commission to continue to look for prioritizing these investments on the greatest return on investment to our citizens, so we can all win. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Agusa. We'll move to the next speaker.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So good to see you, Comptroller Diamond. Joshua Wallach, 8126 International Drive. I have long since seen dysfunction in other municipalities that when forces from the media or other interests use toxic divide-and-conquer tactics, pitting residents versus business communities in a battle for who is more important. It's shameful, and it should never even be questioned here in Orange County, that the residents benefit and have always benefited tremendously from the world-class tourism infrastructure that we enjoy. Best-in-the-world theme parks and attractions, notably the Walt Disney World Resort, Universal Orlando, and SeaWorld, and of course, the 55,000 hotel rooms within the International Drive Resort area that are filled and with rates and taxes attributed to large conventions at the Orange County Convention Center. This is the source of our strength. Many of the prospective projects that you're considering for TDT dollars are tremendously important, but the money for them is being created by the tourism and convention economies. When COVID hit in 2020, Orlando literally collapsed and led the state in every unemployment statistic. This is our core business, making sure that the theme parks are full, the hotel rooms are full, and the Orange County Convention Center is as competitive as possible for high-impact corporate business. You may hear that there are people in there, but people for volleyball tournaments, trade shows, or drive-in business are not putting heads in bets. A meeting planner comes to visit our center, they walk through, they look around, gather info on our market, then they say thank you to Mark Tester's staff, and fly to Las Vegas, where they finished a $1 billion renovation in October 2019 and just broke ground on another $600 million expansion. That's, they're nearly $2 billion ahead of our aforementioned core business. How are we going to compare with that if we don't strike back and let the meetings world know we intend to compete at the highest level? The fact is, we need and must help with affordable housing in our community. We need transportation improvement. The fact is, we need and must help with affordable housing in our community, we need transportation improvements, but it is not one or the other. The core business must thrive to have the massive TDT dollars for our projects to have funding and go smoothly. Mayor and Commissioners, I respectfully request that you consider funding the completion of the Convention Center Master Plan.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wallach. Other speakers, please.
Yes, Mayor, the next batch of speakers is going to start with Sarah Elbaudry, followed by Natasha Wiley, Renia Jones, Justin Kenzie, and Kurt Geis.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you. Sarah Elbaudry, six-one-seven North Magnolia Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-oh-one. Hello, my name is Sarah Elbaudry. I have the privilege and pleasure of serving as the Deputy District Director for Congressman Maxwell Frost. I want to applaud the work of the TDT Task Force. I appreciate the work that Orange County Task Forces do to help shape the future of our county. In the case of the Housing for All Task Force, that was co-chaired by Terry Prather, a ten-year action plan set off the creation of a brand-new funding source that serves as a multiplier for the production of affordable housing. Similarly, the Mayor's convening of the TDT Task Force sat at the forefront of transformative work to invest in much-needed programs, facilities, that advance, diversify, and ultimately strengthen our tourism and hospitality industry. Through our office, Congressman Maxwell Frost is focusing on three priorities: preventing gun violence, addressing affordable housing, and finally, supporting arts and culture, much of why I'm here today speaking on TDT. Through all of our work and partnerships, we want to encourage and support equity. I shared this last time, but once again, in a time where we are facing new conversations about history, inclusivity, and safety from our potential visitors, this is an opportunity to show the country how Orange County values the humanity and humanities of our community. Again, I want to thank the TDT Task Force for their service. I'm here to express special support for two of the task force's recommendations. Recommendation number one, advancing the granting organization's requests as presented to the Board of County Commissioners, and including the survey results for the board to make final level of funding decisions. We are particularly excited about the increased funding request that will advance the work of the Application Review Committee and Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs in supporting our community organizations. You've heard from workers today about living wages. We want to also draw attention to the recommendation number four from the task force, that the county update its criteria for assessing TDT projects' funding to better evaluate the project's contributions for the community and for workforce needs and jobs. Thank you for supporting, thank you for the opportunity for public comment. We appreciate collaborating with you, and we look forward to the investments, decisions you make in the people and places in our county. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Elbaudry. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Good morning, everybody in here. I just want to start off by saying that my name is Renia Jones. I stay at four-two-nine-one Men's Lane, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-one-six. I am a track-and-field athlete at the University of Central Florida, and I'm here to speak on behalf of UCF Athletics. I just want to implore you guys to create an interest in the sport of track-and-field, but to also understand how my dreams have progressed at UCF. So I want to start by saying I have a lot of accolades at UCF. This past weekend, I went to Costa Rica, and I was able to perform on my first USA international team. That was such a great opportunity for me, and I've actually competed at the two thousand and twenty-one Olympic Trials in Oregon. I've also been runner-up at Outdoor Nationals in two thousand and twenty-one, Indoor Nationals, I got third in the sixty-meter hurdles. I don't know if I told you guys, but I do hurdles and short sprints. But I just want to talk about how UCF has really impacted my life and just gave me the opportunity to pursue my dreams, and I think that you all should just take this time to invest in kids that have dreams, that they want to pursue them. I'm from Miami, where it's a very crab-in-a-bucket mentality, and so getting the opportunity to go to UCF and graduate as well. I have a degree in criminal justice, and I also have a minor in journalism studies. I'm taking the opportunity to pursue my education for a master's in political science as well. So I'm saying all this to say that UCF Athletics is going in the direction of heading into the Conference of Big Twelve, and it's a big foundation, and there's so many bigger track schools out there, so many bigger sports schools out there, and I believe that we have a chance to levelize this playing field by going into the Big Twelve. But at the same time, focus on the dreams that these kids have, and being able to travel the world, being able to inspire other kids that want to pursue education, but also pursue sports as well. So, um, thank you all for listening to me today. I hope this really impacted you guys to understand how everybody has their own dreams and how everybody really wants to pursue them. Um, thank you, guys.
Well, Renia Jones, thank you for being here today, and congratulations on your success as a track athlete. We look forward to seeing you running and running fast in the Olympics. I ran track myself, and was a hurdler, as a matter of fact, so high five to you, Renia Jones. Alright, next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Natasha Wiley. I live at fifty-five-twenty-four Arnold Palmer Drive, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-eleven. I'm here on behalf of the Haitian community. I'll speak on two things. I know I only have two minutes. I don't, I don't have to tell you guys how important art and cultural affairs for us in the Haitian community with our rich and vibrant culture. We would like to be part, to present this part of Haiti, of our culture to you guys. So please consider increasing the funding for TDT. Second part is to present an award to our Commissioner Mike Scott for your tremendous support unto the community since you have been elected, and also for supporting our third annual gala, the tour that Tabo Kombu, a legendary man, has chosen Orlando to be part of the Haitian Heritage Tour, and we want to thank you for your, for being there, for representing City of Orlando. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Commissioner Scott, you want to go down real quick? Quickly, quickly, quickly.
Introduce for your outstanding leadership in Orange County, the six-six, contributions to the Haitian community. Thank you for your dedication and support.
Alright. Okay, alright, thank you all for your presence. We gotta move quickly. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Kurt Geis. I live at four-oh-nine East Henson Avenue in Oakland, Florida. Commissioners, if I were to ask you today to close your eyes and imagine a community event here in Central Florida that could bring significant national and local media attention, that attracts presidential cabinet members, congressional leaders, state, county, and local elected officials as guest speakers, members of award, platinum-awarding album rock bands, artists, community, country-western music stars, veterans, first responders, proud Americans who come together to celebrate our veterans and our culture and arts in Central Florida while raising funds to end veteran suicide. Could you? Well, guess what? You can open your eyes, because it's been happening for the past six years right here in Central Florida, and it's ready for us to take it to the next level. My name is Kurt Geis, and I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of the United States Navy, and I'm the Executive Director of Challenge Twenty-two Incorporated, which is a nonprofit designed to help bring the community and veterans together to end the pandemic of twenty-two veterans taking their lives every day. Over the past six years, we've had thousands of people participate and attend from all over Florida and the United States. In May, we were invited by one of the task force members who knew about what our organization does and asked us to come to speak at, at the meeting. He said, "It seems the money always goes to the same organizations year after year, and that we have as much right as anybody else to share in the funds." By granting one million dollars to Challenge Twenty-two, it would allow us to market, promote, advertise, and bring artists and entertainers from across the country to our events, thereby drawing people to Central Florida, who will then reach into their pockets to spend money on our economy, sleep in our hotels, eat at our restaurants, while also donating time and, and energy to the cause of ending veteran suicide. West Orange County and our veterans, who put on cultural events like this, ask that we get your attention too. Oh, and Mary Demmings, if you want to know more about our event, you very personally know one of our past guest speakers. In two thousand and nineteen, Congressman Val Demmings was at our event, and she was our guest speaker. You can ask her how amazing it was.
Alright, yay. Alright, thank you very much for your comments. We gotta move along, though. Alright, next speaker, please.
Was there, uh, Justin Kenzie? Alright, uh, Mayor, believe it or not, this is the last batch of speakers, starting with Lana Geis.
So we do have one lady, and if you can give us your name, and if you didn't fill out a speaker card, make sure you see.
I, I did.
Yeah, there's one more batch, so.
Oh, one more batch.
Lana Geis, followed by Michael Winslow, Tim Lovell, Thomas Lowry, and Stephen Facella.
Hi, Lana Geis, four-oh-nine East Henson Avenue, Oakland. Hi, I am Lana Geis, and I am the wife of that twenty-five-year-old veteran, and I am here to advocate for Challenge Twenty-two as a recipient and a candidate that'd be eligible for the TDT funding, specifically in the arts and cultural category. Many years ago, when I worked for Visit Florida, I had the privilege of myself reviewing grant proposals such as this. I reviewed proposals from various museums, festivals, heritage events, historical tours, seasonal performances, and even a circus. Challenge Twenty-two is exactly all of that combined. It's already attracting national attention. A museum, you ask? Yes. How about a traveling memorial of, of the Vietnam Memorial Wall that stands as a reminder of the great sacrifices made during the Vietnam War? It's three-fifths the size of the actual wall, and travelers come to see it because they can't afford to go to DC. Musicians that are passionate about our cause of saving veterans' lives set aside time to perform at this event. The popular bands Godsmack and Toby Keith have both been personally involved in our event. We have local gymnasts and aerialists perform, artists paint, and crafters craft. Art is one of the top PTSD healing tools used to help our veterans heal. According to a study conducted by the World Tourism Organization, music and entertainment is the fastest-growing travel trend, and we've got that. With Toby Keith and Godsmack, we would have plenty more. I just want to invite you to come to our event on November eleventh and find out for yourself. Challenge Twenty-two will attract veterans from all over the world. Thank you.
Alright, and thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Mike Winslow. I reside at two-thirty-five Sunrise Avenue in Satellite Beach, Florida. I'm actually here on behalf of Challenge Twenty-two. I happen to sit on the board of this amazing organization, and we are here to petition funds from the TDT fund pool. The event, I invite you all. It's in Winter Garden, Florida. It's here local. It is November eleventh, starts around nine AM. It's an incredible event that started as a grassroots effort to raise awareness of veteran suicide. But the amazing thing is, in our journey to raise awareness, we have actually been able to link with organizations that are curing PTS. And the event is an amazing event to the extent that we not only have local artists, local musicians, and other local talents, we are bringing visitors from not only across the state, but from across the nation. There are two significant organizations that we have connected with. One is the Reverend Warriors, which is a group that does ruck walks for veterans across the United States. They're going to be attending our event come this November. And the beautiful thing about that is they're bringing veterans and their families from all across the country. We also partner with Florida for Warriors, which is another grassroots veteran organization that get together and they attend these walks together as a group, bringing their families. They're bringing families in from all across the state of Florida. This is not to mention the connections that we have through the American Legion, not only throughout the state, but throughout the country. So this is not only a draw of local talent, both musically and artistically, but also a significant draw for folks from out of town. I reside in Satellite Beach, and there's a huge contingent of veterans that will be coming in from just the East Coast, from other counties, to visit local Winter Garden and support our local businesses, as well as this an amazing event. So I thank you for giving us time today, and again, Challenge Twenty-two, Winter Garden, Florida, November eleventh. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Tim Lovell. I'm living eight-ninety-nine McCoya Drive, Ocoee, Florida, and I am with the American Legion Second Vice Commander. I want to salute you for what you've done for the Purple Heart veterans and thank the attention that there is, a wound, a soreness that veterans get, that they don't get a Purple Heart for, and that's PTSD. Challenge Twenty-two helps gentlemen with PTSD, men and women. And not only do we help veterans, we help first responders, we help nurses, we help police department, anybody who is in trouble, who may have a fear of suicide, we did a help. Our event brings in individuals nationwide. Last year, we had Peter O'Rourke, who used to be the VA Secretary. We had individuals who were presidential candidates, commissioner candidates, senator candidates. We bring this to your attention because Challenge Twenty-two is something in West Orange County that's helping us build. We have entertainment, we bring food, we bring help to all. Thank you very much.
Alright, uh, thank you, sir, for your comments. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tom Lowry. I live at ten-thirty-five Red Dandy Drive, and technically, Ocoee, three-two-eight-one-eight. I am here also in support of Challenge Twenty-two. I am a member, member-at-large with Post, uh, American Legion Post sixty-three in Winter Garden. My activities involve for the last fifty-eight years with the American Legion, and I'm a firm believer, and from my heart, I cannot say more of what we have done and what is being accomplished throughout Western Orange County. To see it grow from, from day one has just been such an honor and a privilege that I, I cannot say enough. And to Kurt's point, the monies, the funding, it all goes back for our first responders, the respect that we give them, and just the, the brotherhood, sisterhood, the love that we can pass on. With that, I thank you again, and I'll keep this short.
Alright, uh, thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Standing there, I realized that I'm probably here because they gave me a scholarship to go to Boy State and learn how government works when I was a kid. I just put that together, so thank you for that. My name is Stephen Facella, volunteer, member of the TDD, TDT Task Force. I'm the owner of a family-owned restaurant. The address is Playa Pizza, one-three-two-one-one Reams Road, Windermere, three-four-seven-eight-six. This is for, screen. Uh, when I read the mayor's memo announcing the task force, I agreed to volunteer because I was excited by the mayor's message about wanting discussions regarding unencumbered TDT revenues. The memo also said the group would be comprised of a diverse cross-section of Orange County residents, and we will exclude registered lobbyists, elected officials, or organizations that currently receive TDT funding or potentially may be seeking TDT funding. The goal is to have representation from various geographical and socioeconomic levels. The culmination of the task force was a survey asking us to rank the various projects presented to us. After filling out this grand finale, at the end of the next meeting, when the completely predictable results were announced, one of the non-lobsters announced that we were sending a strong message to the commission. Uh, that's when I voted against putting my name on those results. I thought I was volunteering to talk about excess and unencumbered TDT. I thought I was volunteering to talk about excess and unencumbered TDT revenue, not the same projects and organizations who through state law already receive funding. Nobody is trying to stop that. Now we are supposedly telling you to ignore real-life needs and issues in our community and give the same organizations the excess and unencumbered funds as well. I invite each of you to the parking lot in my plaza where my business is located, each of you Commissioners. Come see the hospitality workers who live in their car at night. Come, come meet them. Ask them what they think of the towers that are not for them, that are going to be built at the Dr. Phillips Center. After the survey results meeting, I went immediately to a community meeting about a road that is in front of my restaurant, and I was told it won't be done now until 2030. It was supposed to be done in 2022. Why? No funding. At the same meeting, I heard the Sheriff's Department, no funding, no parks, no funding. Please wake up to the world we're in. Conventions are canceling on us because of politics. Meanwhile, as our workers are poor, hungry, and sometimes homeless, I beg in your heart to do what you know is right. We're talking about excess funds.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Facella. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, there are two final speakers. That will be Helen Moses and Ian Russell.
Hello, Mayor Demmings and Commissioners. It's a new thing for me to be available, to see my government, my local government. And I came at an amazing day. I'm in awe, really, of the complexities and how people express themselves. I'm here, I didn't tell you my name, Helen Moses. I live at 318 Enka Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32835, longtime resident. And I'm here because I'm aware, and you all are too, about there's more opportunities for extortion. And I just would love to get an idea across that came to my head, to protect our Orange County homeowners, we're going to have more, so let's protect them, with maybe a simple addition to the deeds that are on file. So, you know, I have an idea of just the resident taking the responsibility, and I think I discussed that with somebody that I see now, to say, I have no interest in selling, but I will notify the department when I do want to sell. I'm just looking at a stopgap. And I don't want to spend any money, but I'm sure it would take some money to have electronic signing or walk-in, notarized things. I'm just trying to solve the problem. I'm a former first-grade teacher, so my mind goes in many directions to the end. I don't know if I've explained myself, but I just want to have more protection for homeowners, since we have so much activity coming up in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moses.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
On behalf of all the first-grade school teachers. All right, next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name's Ian Russell. I live at 2614 Amber Gate Road in Winter Park, Florida. Mayor Demmings, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I will be brief. I own a business with my wife Juliana called Smokin' Donuts Barbecue here in the Milk District in Orange County. And we've had a very unique experience over the past couple of years. We were at a wonderful point in our business, had just moved into a new brick-and-mortar location at the beginning of 2020, and COVID hit and took that out. And we have survived because of what I've come to learn is required when running a small business, and that's a community of supporters around you, right? Government can't do it alone. Individual business owners can't do it alone. The supporters, our guests, can't do it alone. It really does require a group, a community, to say, this business is going to survive. And one of the important components for us has been Visit Orlando. We are given access to the broad spectrum of tourists that come to the Orlando area with the initial instinct perhaps to visit the parks, right? They go to, you know, Disney World, Universal, SeaWorld, and maybe don't know very much about the smaller restaurants like Mine that are off the beaten path a little bit. But we get access to them through companies or facilities like Visit Orlando. So that's item number one, that our partnership with Visit Orlando has given to us. The other thing is, and I think this is something that's forgotten too, a vast, vast majority of our guests are employed by tourism, right? A huge percentage of the guests that we have in our restaurant every day are employed by the fact that we have this wonderful, broad spectrum of tourists that come to the Orlando area, again, brought here with the help of Visit Orlando. So it's been a huge, important component in our survival, and I'm here to say, please continue to fund them. They help small businesses like Mine. Thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Russell, best wishes to you and your business. Is that the final speaker, Mr. Thamwulu?
Mayor, this time I'm certain that was the final speaker.
Okay, all right. Thank you all to all of the speakers who came today. Just by way of process, we will be hearing in just a few moments, a presentation by the co-chairs of the Tourist Development Task Force that was put in place. The board will not take formal action today on, you know, going forward about any decisions related to budgetary matters related to the TDT. That will require a much more detailed meeting, but we wanted to give, hear from our co-chairs formerly here at the Board of County Commission today, and to give those of you who live in our community an opportunity to speak during public comment. So with that, we're going to move forward to the consent agenda. I'll ask the county administrator at this time, Mr. Byron Brooks, to present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Demmings. Don't have any changes to the consent agenda, so staff presents consent agenda as submitted.
All right, with that, is there a motion?
So move, Jeribi.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes, and it is unanimous. I do want to note a few things on the consent agenda this morning. First, I want to note that there was approval of a contract to purchase a parcel of environmentally sensitive lands in west Orange County. The Bronson Fairchild Liquidating Trust parcel totals approximately 20.85 acres that will help preserve environmentally sensitive lands adjacent to an extensive network of existing conservation easements in District 1, Commissioner Wilson. This acquisition represents the 14th purchase since the mayor and county commissioners dedicated $100 million for the preservation of environmentally sensitive lands. And so we are indeed moving the needle with that regard. Also, I do want to also recognize the managerial appointment of Ms. Susan Van Oosak, a professional engineer, who is being appointed as Deputy Director of Public Works. I believe she's here somewhere in the audience. There she is, okay. Welcome to our team here with Orange County, and this county embodies our commitment to also making certain that we embrace diversity as we promote up within our community. So thank you. We look forward to working with you for years to come. All right. With that, we're going to move forward now on our agenda for today. It's already been a full morning. We do have a scheduled press event that is due to start at 11:30, but we're going to try to manage our time. We do have on the discussion agenda, our procurement item, Ms. Carrie Mathis, our manager of the Procurement Division, is going to come forward and frame this item. And with that, Ms. Mathis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The signing begins on page 593 of your agenda. The Procurement Committee has evaluated proposals for the final design services for Orange Avenue from the Orange-Osceola County line to Town Center Boulevard. I am requesting board selection of one firm and an alternate. Commissioner Bonilla was assigned to the Procurement Committee.
All right. With that, do we have a motion, Commissioner Bonilla?
I move for the select. I move for the selection of Dewberry Engineers, Inc., 467 points, with DRMP, Inc., 376.67 points as the alternate.
Second, Gomez.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion does pass, and it is unanimous. All right, with that, thank you, Ms. Mathis. We're going to move forward. Very quickly, I'm going to ask Ms. Roseanne Harrington to come forward, who is going to lead off in terms of the introduction of our Orange County Tourist Development Tax Citizen Advisory Task Force and some recommendations that were made there.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to introduce the chairs of the Tourist Development Citizen Advisory Task Force. We had two chairs, co-chairs, Tony Jenkins, who is the CEO of Florida Blue, and we have Jane Healy, retired editor of the Orlando Sentinel. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff that has worked on this task force, including Natalia Garcia, and we had Kate Latorre, Fred Wintercamp, and also Carol Burkett. So I'd like to thank them and then turn things over to the chairs.
All right. All right, Mr. Jenkins.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Let me start off by saying, just like Roseanne said, I want to thank the staff for their work and making sure that we were prepared. I want to give a special shout-out to Roseanne Harrington, who made sure that we were up to speed on everything. I want to also thank Mayor Demmings for convening this task force. I also want to thank the Commissioners, because each of you had appointees that participated on this committee. I thought the dialogue was rich, meaningful, and I now know more about TDT than a lot of other folks in the room. But the extensive education was valuable, it was beneficial, but more importantly, it gave us insight into the economic drivers of this community. Without this process, we wouldn't have had the ability to understand the revenue-generating opportunities that we receive in this community. So I want to say thank you for the dialogue from these 31 community stakeholders that participated in this process.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. I want to once again thank Mayor Demmings for creating this task force. I don't know if everybody realizes, it's the first time since 1978 that there's been any discussion by citizens of this tax. Even in 1978, when it was approved, there wasn't. All the discussion was in Tallahassee. So this is the first time ever. And I know that the task force went a little beyond what was originally the parameters, but I think that ended up very healthy, because everybody and all the diverse interests on the task force were able to get out what they want, because it may never happen again. So they're all on the record of what they want, and we really appreciate the mayor and Commissioners considering all these. And I will turn it over to J.B. Adams, and he will tell you everything that the task force has proposed. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners. I would also like to start by thanking Mayor Demmings and everyone who works in the mayor's office. Thank you to the task force and to the co-chairs for all their efforts. I'm J.B. Adams. My company is Adams Learning, and I do management consulting. I was invited to work with the task force and to provide data collection, data analysis, and facilitation services. The agenda that you see on the screen will cover an overview of the process that we use with the task force, including the recommendations, and we will conclude with your questions. I also want to point out that you have been provided with this printed report of the task force findings. This will be made public, of course. I will refer to the report as I proceed. So on pages three through five of the report, you will see the letters from the mayor. Mayor Demmings impaneled the Advisory Task Force on March 22 of 2023 to review and provide input to the Board of County Commissioners and the Tourist Development Council on potential uses of future unencumbered revenues. The task force was comprised of 31 members, representing a cross-section of Orange County residents from various geographical and socioeconomic groups, including individuals appointed by Commissioners, municipalities, labor veterans, chambers of commerce, and the hospitality industry. Here you see a list of all the task force members. This is provided on page six of the report. And again, this is a very broad and diverse representation of groups from throughout Orange County, representing labor, municipalities, veterans, and students, among others. So here's the process that we used. The task force met a total of seven times. The first two meetings took place in March and May, and at these meetings, the task force members received extensive education on the TDT, Florida statutes covering TDT uses, the economic impact of previously funded projects, and existing Orange County grant programs. Comptroller Diamond also provided a thorough view of TDT revenues, as well as details on the oversight process. We use an interest indicator process to obtain information on potential community projects seeking TDT funding. You can find the interest indicator form on pages 11 through 13, if you want to know what the applicants use in order to make their applications. Through this process, there were a total of 55 organizations that responded, and 16 of those organizations made requests in the amount of 20 million or more. You can find the total list of the 55 applicants on page 14 and 15 of the report. As I said, 16 applicants made requests for 20 million or more. These requests exceed the cap on existing Orange County grant programs, including the Application Review Committee and the Arts and Cultural Affairs Grants. So these 16 applicants were given a little extra attention, and of these, 14 made presentations. I'd like to go through who the 16 were. So these organizations in central Florida put together their applications, and because of the effort that they put in, I would like to make sure that their names get heard. These applicants included Orlando City Baseball Dreamers, Florida Citrus Sports, Orange County Convention Center, Arts and Cultural Affairs and United Arts, Amway Center, UCF Sports, Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, Greater Orlando Sports Commission, the Association to Preserve the Eatonville Community, the Application Review Committee, excuse me, Committee, Orange County Regional History Center, Orlando Manello Art Museum, Lou Gardens, the Holocaust Museum, the Orlando Urban Film Festival, and the Association to Preserve African-American Society, History, and Traditions, also known as PAST, and the Wellsville Museum. Of these 16, you can see that their requests for funding range from 20 million to 975 million. Two of them withdrew. Those two are the ones with asterisks next to them, the Holocaust Museum and Lou Gardens, leaving 14 organizations to make presentations to the task force. The presentations took place at three task force meetings in May and June, which you can see here on the screen. And again, of these 14, three of these organizations are granting organizations, and I will come back to that in a moment. The task force was asked to evaluate the applicants according to the evaluation criteria which were provided by ARC. So what that means is, you can find these criteria on pages 16 and 17 in the report. Each applicant was evaluated according to its ability to draw tourism expansion, which includes tourist attraction, advertising reach, and tourism industry collaboration, according to project soundness, including the quality of the project, its process design and planning, operational readiness, and financial readiness. And the third bit of criteria is the anticipated return on investment, which was measured according to economic benefit and tax revenues. We used a six-point scale to evaluate. We used a six-point scale to evaluate these, rating from zero to five. So after the presentations, we engaged in a survey that was completed between June 16th and June 20th. We had 30 out of 31 task force members participating. There were a total of 147 items on the survey, which included 119 quantitative rated items and 28 open-ended items where we gathered qualitative written comments. The average amount of time spent on the survey was about 60 minutes, so task force members took this process very seriously. I took in all the data and analyzed it and prepared the first report, and the task force met on June 26th to, to review the results of survey one and consider their recommendations. So I would like to start by sharing the results from the first save, survey regarding the three granting organizations. These, these three organizations requested funding in amounts larger than 20 million, but they all used that money to provide grants to other smaller organizations around the county. You can see the results from the findings from the survey on page 18, but I will go through them with you. So the first granting organization that we'll review is the Application Review Committee, also known as ARC. So ARC requested a funding amount of $60 million, which is divided up over five years to be $12 million per year, and the task force was asked if they support this request. 93% of the task force said yes. Beyond the 60 million, ARC also requested 100 million or $20 million over the course of five years when excess TDT funds allow for it. The task force was asked if they support this request. 69% of the task force said yes. And ARC also requested expanding the maximum amount that they can provide to individual projects to fall in a range between 2 million and 20 million. The current range is between 2 million and 10 million. The task force was asked if they support this, expanding it to 20 million, and 60% said yes. The second granting organization was Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs. For the first item, the current cap on funding for individual projects is $500,000. Arts and Cultural Affairs requested increasing the cap to go up to 2 million. 79% of the task force members supported this. Arts and Cultural Affairs requested increasing the cultural venues rental subsidy from $500,000 to $1 million. This is for groups who need assistance for renting events, facilities. 76% of the task force said yes to supporting this request. Arts and Cultural Affairs requested an increase in funding from 3% of the first four cents to 5% of the first four cents. 80% of the task force said yes. They also requested increasing funding from a fixed amount of 2 million to a fixed amount of 5 million, and 77% of the task force said yes to supporting this. The third granting organization was Orlando, Greater Orlando Sports Commission. Go Sports requested increasing operational funding from $300,000 per year to $740, 660.50 per year. 80% of the task force said yes to that, and they also requested increasing the amount of SIC funding, that's Sports Incentive Committee funding, from 4 million to $10 million per year for a term of the next 11 years. Two-thirds of the task force said yes to supporting that request. And so going through all of this material regarding these three granting organizations, the first recommendation from the task force is, is this. The task force supports advancing the three granting organizations request as presented to the Board of County Commissioners, and will include the survey results for the board to make the final level of funding decision. That's the first recommendation that came out of that meeting. The remainder of the discussion in that session involved ranking the 11 organizations. So we had these 11 organizations that made their presentations. They were all evaluated on the survey, and they were evaluated using the ARC committee criteria. So what you see on the left-hand side of the screen are the weighted scores using that criteria. What you see on the right-hand side of the screen is responses to the question regarding, is this organization ready to be considered for funding? And that allowed us to break the applicants into these three levels, orange, yellow, and pink. The applicants in the orange level have a weighted score of greater than 80, greater than 80, and a perceived readiness of greater than 90%. And those two organizations were Orange County Convention Center and Florida Citrus Sports. The organizations in the yellow level have a weighted score between 60 and 80, and/or a perceived readiness percentage between 50% and 90%. Those organizations included Amway Center, Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, and UCF Sports with regard to the weighted scores. And with regard to perceptions of readiness, Manello Museum of Art also had a perceived readiness at 75%. The organizations at the pink level had weighted scores below 60 and a readiness percentage below 50%. So using this ranking and discussing the perceptions of this, the task force voted to support advancing groups with a weighted score of 60 or higher for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners in this order, or rank, Orange County Convention Center, Florida Citrus Sports, Amway Center, Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, and UCF Sports. At the end of this meeting, there was some discussion as to whether or not the next meeting needed to be held, and it was voted on and approved that we would proceed with the meeting, the second meeting to be held in July. So between June 28th and July 3rd, the task force participated in a second survey, survey which collected ideas and recommendations for topics to discuss and consider as recommendations at the meeting on Monday, July 17th. In this second survey, we had 17 task force members who provided a total of 33 comments. All of the comments, by the way, are included at the end of the last appendix in the report, but I'm going to give you the summary. So as I said, we had 17 task member, task force members who provided comments, and here's a thematic analysis of what those comments amounted to. We had nine members who just made a request to discuss alternative uses for TDT funding. Of those, three members had just general calls to say, let's discuss alternative uses. They didn't specify. Six members had specific calls for alternative uses of TDT funding, which included these. Three members wanted to discuss mass transit infrastructure. Two members wanted to discuss funding for specific communities. Two members wanted to discuss infrastructure, other infrastructure projects, and another member wanted to discuss just in general, other projects that could be considered for the TDT. Four members of the task force said that the work of the task force is complete. Three members of the task force wanted to discuss affordable housing for workers in the hospitality industry and its association with the tourist impact tax. Three members wanted to discuss recommended changes to policy or oversight. Two members wanted to discuss procedural concerns or questions, and three members had one-off comments that didn't connect to any other comments. And again, you can see all of the comments shared verbatim at the end of the report. So the, the discussion led to these recommendations. Recommendation three is that the task force recommends that Mayor Demmings and the Board of County Commissioners strongly push the legislature to change the tourist impact tax so it applies to all counties in Florida. And again, this recommendation is addressing the issue of affordable housing for hospitality industry workers. And recommendation four is that the task force recommends that the county update its criteria for assessing TDT project funding to better evaluate the project's contribution to the community and workforce needs and jobs. So there was a lot of discussion about how we can make things better for the people of Orange County and whether or not these projects protect the rights and benefits of the people who are working on the projects and in these facilities. Our findings from the task force were presented at the Tourist Development Council on July 18th, just one week ago from today, and the Tourist Development Council moved to support the recommendations of the TDT task force and recommend that they be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners, leading us to where we are today. And so with that, here are the four recommendations from the task force again, and now our co-chairs invite your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. We got a time management issue. We're going to hear from the co-chairs. Let's do this, because I think we're going to end up in a prolonged kind of a conversation. So we have a press conference for, with a major announcement that is going to be done at 11:30. So let's take, let's go into recess for about 20 minutes, and we'll return and then pick up from this spot to hear the questions or comments by members of the board. So let's, let's go into recess. We'll take a 20-minute recess and do the press briefing that the Commissioners here are going to participate in. And I believe I saw City of Orlando Commissioner Regina Hill come in. I believe she's going to be participating in the, on the press event. So let's do that, okay? Very quickly. Thank you. We're going to recess and reconvene.